Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to once again welcome everyone present. And as always, especially a joy to see young people here. Tonight, we have some scouts and we have the All-Stars. We are very proud of the and appreciative of what you have done to bring yourself to this particular station in life. Call to order this meeting. Let's have our roll call, please. And we've got two that are absent, Mr. Manager, of those requests for excuses.
Sub move, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner. Commissioner Lawhorn and Commissioner Furley.
All right. All in favor of the motion, let's vote.
Thank you. Finish the roll call and I'll be able to put it on the vote screen. I just wanted to make sure.
That's the roll call. Okay. And now, this will be your motion to excuse your commissioners.
Thank you. Now let's stand. We will have our indication. And please, please.
Please bow your head, please. Dear Father, we thank you for this moment in time. We thank you for the families and the audience and in homes everywhere. Bless us that we may be loving to each other and understanding and respectful. All these things, I pray in your name. Amen.
Face flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
No, sir.
If not, do we want them?
Move approval.
All right. Let's vote. Okay, Mr. Manager, I believe it's Mary Perkins. There we go.
Yes.
Ready to?
Yes, your first item is the recognizing of Eagle Scouts. If we can get a motion to approve that.
All right. Motion made in second. Let's vote again. I believe we're ahead of the machine, aren't we?
Yes. Sorry about that. How does that go away? There you go.
All right.
It's the first time I was first.
Okay. Give me a go, please.
That's weird.
Tonight, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners has the honor of recognizing three young men in our community who are in the organization of the Boy Scouts of America who've earned the rank of Eagle Scout. And as we call each name, we're going to read your certificate, but also if you can bring up any family, friends, scout master, anybody you have that helped you on this trail to become an Eagle Scout, we'd welcome them to come up and be recognized too. So first, we're going to recognize Chase Andrew Coltrane. If you'll come forward. Hello? Just put you all around here. Just make a circle, it's fine. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the certificate? And here's the certificate we're going to read. It's entitled Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Chase Andrew Coltrane for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project he built installed several heavy-duty shooting range, heavy-duty shooting instructor benches at the 4-H Club. This is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners on this 20th day of August 2018, signed by our Chairman, Mark W. Owens, Jr. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Chase. Very proud of you, son. Know y'all liked it.
Turn that around, take a picture. Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Colin Avery Malpass, if he'll come forward. Okay, again, we have a certificate. Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Colin Avery Malpass for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he built heavy-duty benches for the Pitt County Council on Aging. Again, presented by our Chairman, Mr. Mark W. Owens, Jr.
Thank you, son. Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
White, I think she wants to catch a picture.
Turn that around, yeah.
Very good.
Our third recognition is to Erin Dean Rappelia. If I'm pronouncing it right? If I'm not, you can correct me.
He was actually unable to attend, but wanted to be recognized.
Okay. For his project, he built and installed a durable exercise station and yard at the VA Hospital here in Greenville. And here's his certificate. Actually, the next item is to recognize the Pitt County Ten and Under All-Star Softball Team. And, Mr. Chairman, we actually have to go back down and do one more presentation. Sorry about that.
Motion to approve the resolution. All right, let's vote on that.
So tonight, we are recognizing the Ten and Under Girls Softball Team. And if we can have the team come up and the coaches. And if we can have you form a circle here in the front.
Semi-circle.
And as I understand, obviously, we are recognizing you for your participating as a player in the 2018 Babe Ruth Softball World Series, but you're also the North Carolina Ten and Under Softball State Champions, correct? Which then advanced you to the World Series. So we have a certificate for each of the players, and we also have then recognition for the coaches. Yeah, I've got this resolution here, too. For the team. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can read this? Okay. Pitt County Board of Commissioners Resolution of Recognition, recognition honoring the Pitt County Ten and Under All-Star Softball Team. Whereas the Pitt County Ten and Under All-Star Softball Team played softball with remarkable success and dignity as represented as a Pitt County and the state of North Carolina. And whereas through their state victory, the members of the Pitt County Ten and Under All-Star Softball Team earned the right to represent the state of North Carolina in the 2018 Babe Ruth Softball World Series in Florida. And whereas the Pitt County Ten and Under All-Star Softball Team won its third straight game at its World Series tournament in Florida when they beat the Germantown All-Stars five to one to reach the championship round. The Pitt County Ten and Under All-Star Team is the following: Cassidy Butler, Summer Davenport, Cheyenne Forbes, Brian Lee Hamilton, Corey Houston, Rayland Jones, McKinsey Moore, Robin Moore, Lindsey Noel, Ashlyn Overby, Kalen Pilgrine, and Haven Robuck. The coaches is Johnny Butler, Keith Height, correct? Ryan Harris. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the outstanding achievements of the Pitt County Ten and Under All-Star Softball Team and congratulates the players, manager, coaches, and families for their accomplishment at the 2018 Babe Ruth Softball World Series in Treasure Coast, Florida. This is adopted this 20th day of August 2018 by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, signed by our Chairman, Mark W. Owens, and attested by our clerk, Kimberly Hines. Mr. Chairman, would you present that?
Who should we give it to? We've got so many stars here.
So we have a certificate each of the players, and I'll just read the first one, then we'll read the names off as we go. Certificate of recognition is awarded to Cassidy Butler for participating as a player in the 2018 Babe Ruth Softball World Series presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners on this 20th day of August 2018, again, signed by our Chairman, Mark W. Owens. Sorry.
She wants to shake an hand.
Okay. Next one is to, we'll hold the applause till the end if we could. Brian Lee Hamilton. Am I saying that right?
Vertically.
Brindley, okay. Corey Houston. Rayland Jones. McKenzie Moore. Robin Moore. Ashlyn Overby.
Did you get that right?
Kalen Pilgrine. And Haven Robuck. Perfect attendance tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. And to the coaches, we'd like to recognize Johnny Butler. Congratulations. Keith Height? I have problems with that.
Thank you.
And Ryan Harris.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate you.
Okay, we have extra resolutions for the coaches, if you'd like one as well, too. So.
The ones on the line here.
Don't want to say anything?
I said momentarily about ago how much it means to each of us here on this board to have the young people and the coaches that come, the scouts, of course, we included earlier. But it is such a maturity for us to see young people come in and grow and progress and all the hard work that you do. And it's a great foundation upon which you can build. And we're certainly proud of you, and you've honored us and this county and yourselves and your families to a full extent. Now we can applaud, right? Any of y'all want to say anything?
Coach.
Thank you.
They get empty now. They can let them leave. Oh, yeah, they got it. All the girls sat back. I believe the parents went.
Yeah, it's cool. Yes, next, you have public addresses to the board. We have three people signed up, unless there's somebody in the audience who didn't sign up. First person is Terry Edwards, and if the attorney would read our public addresses statement?
Yes, Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. If you'll approach the podium and state your name and address, we'll have that for the record, and I will keep your time at three minutes per speaker.
Again, Terry Edwards, yes.
I'm Terry Edwards, and I live at 1556 Black Jack Grimesland Road. I want to speak to you tonight to bring to you an issue that we're having out on the Black Jack Grimesland Road. I'm very frustrated because after four phone calls, people coming out there four different times, there's still no resolution. We are at the end, it's a three-fold problem. It's the watershed, it's the Pitt County Highway Maintenance, it's also with building permits being issued, and it's also the district office in Washington. They know that the watershed cannot handle the volume of water coming through there. And some, I want to be proactive because somebody's going to get killed. When it rains out there now, it floods and coats completely across the driveway, across the complete road. Our neighbors this past time, we had to go over there and help his wife get dogs out that the water was barely up on the dogs. She had to take her vehicles and move her vehicles across the road to us on high ground. Mr. Charles Vanderford, after all this time calling, and I called and talked to a gentleman by the name of Jordan today, never got a phone call back from either of the four times that we called, invited him to come out there. It's very simple. The watershed people, Pitt County Highway Maintenance, and the district office, they need to come out there and they need to figure out what they're going to do to fix the flooding in that area. I urge whoever's our county commissioners, you go and look in the Chakot area at where they've done all the work at, and then you go down there and look at Grimesland on the road, the Black Jack Grimesland Road that we live on. You look out by Ham's Cross Road, the water down there, and then you look on the next road over that buzz that goes across the Dixon, and you look at the backup. Mr. Charles Vanderford today even made the comment, with every building permit that is issued, they know the watershed cannot continue to have the water flow. My friend, the neighbor across from us, before the neighbor now, he moved because somebody went through his house. His little girl was sitting there. That's how dangerous it is. The pipes that they put in there, they get selective memory. Nobody remembers what, but I promise you, Mr. Garrison will tell you, I got good memory. Me and Reggie's lived out there all of his life. They came down there because it was an issue five or six years ago, and they put in pipes. Now the pipes are sitting on Pitt County's side, the maintenance, but Pitt County don't know nothing about the pipes. And the whole thing is going to cave in and fall into the road. So I just kind of wanted to bring it to y'all's attention today because when I was talking to them, I said, it's very simple. You know what? I punched in at 8:30 today. Before then, I called Mr. Charles Vanderford, and do you know that he, the person that's in charge now has got some health issues? He was out there before lunch today looking at it. So if y'all can help us out, we'd appreciate it down at that end because we're going to be flooded out.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your concern, and we'll, Manager, will follow up, see if he can help you some on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Talia Barlow, if I'm pronouncing that first name right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is.
Move the mic down some.
Is it here?
Yeah.
Here? You don't hear me? Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Talia Barlow, and the speech topic I chose is an issue facing the youth in my county. The following issue I know a lot about because I am currently in school, and the issue I bring before you is the pressure to succeed. There is a huge pressure in making honor roll and principals list in school. The expectation is so high that it defeats the intended purpose. And if a student doesn't make straight A's or makes a bad grade on a test, it is seen as a quote-unquote failure. And this is a cause of failure. It's surprising because it's ironic. Yes, there are other things like not studying, not paying attention in class, lack of sleep, et cetera, but all of those are often due to the fear of quote-unquote failure. Let me explain. If you feel you are not going to succeed in something, you won't run to it to just go quote-unquote fail. So why study or pay attention in class? If you are worried about the failure, there is a big chance that you won't sleep too soundly. Or let's say you do study, you cram all the material the night before resulting in only a late night, but also studies have shown that cramming before a test makes it harder on your brain to concentrate during a test. I say all this to say that the pressure is one of the worst things for youth in school because it causes fear. I'm not saying that you should just give up and, as many would say, go with the flow, but I'm saying instead of pressuring success, why not encourage it? Some may be thinking that there is no difference, but there is, and I say this from personal experience, the main difference is the approach. Instead of teaching the youth in the school system that failure is wrong and success is what matters, try teaching. You should try not because I'm telling you to, but because you want to, and you shouldn't fear failure, but instead let it motivate you and learn from it. The point of grades is not to determine how competent someone is, it's to determine the level of understanding someone is at. One of my teachers in my design thinking class told everyone, everyone is an expert in something and no one is an expert in everything. Failure will happen in life, there is no escaping it, but it isn't necessarily bad. Sometimes the two steps back are what we need to be launched five steps ahead. In other words, it's not about the failure, it's about how we take it and what we do with it. Are you going to take the failure and stay stagnant, or are you going to use it to your advantage and not only help yourself in the future, but also others? So next time you or someone you know quote-unquote fails, remember that failure is one of the keys to success, not the opposite. What success story have you heard of that has no quote-unquote failure in it? In my opinion, the quote-unquote failure is what makes the story a success. I know that I've said quote-unquote failure multiple times. I did this to catch your attention. The quotation marks are to mean that isn't failure at all, but another word for pre-success. I told you all about the problem of the pressure to not fail in school, giving you why it is a problem, which is it does the opposite of its intention, an alternative to a problem, which is an encouragement instead of pressure. And finally, an explanation why the alternative works. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming presentation.
Did she finish?
Next.
Yes, she did finish.
Okay. Next, we have Pam Strickland.
Hi, I'm Pam Strickland. My address is 4128 Dale Drive. I am the founder of Eastern North Carolina Stop Human Trafficking Now and also the facilitator for the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking. And I come tonight to say thank you. Really, very much appreciative of the engagement that the Pitt County government has had in the issue of human trafficking, and I wanted to highlight a couple of those things. Recently, a training has been planned for Pitt County employees for next month, and we appreciate that. And also, you may have seen, hopefully, as you were coming up today, you saw a poster and a flyer in the elevator that had the human trafficking hotline as well as a training for next month. One thing that we would like to engage further in is participation in the coalition itself. And so I wanted to issue an invitation to our commissioners tonight to consider attending our next Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking meeting. It is on September 20th. It's at 9:30 at Shepherd Memorial Library, and we would love to have your engagement with us on this issue. Another thing I wanted to mention briefly is that I understand that several of you all are attending a conference later on this month for county commissioners, and that the main topic of that conference is the opioid crisis. And so I wanted to ask you and those present to, as you hear more information about the opioid crisis, that you sort of listen for the intersections of drug use and abuse with human trafficking. Many times, human traffickers will use a person's substance use or addiction against them in order to control them. And so that's something that, as you hear more about that, perhaps you could just listen a little more carefully. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is that, you may already know this, Mr. Elliott may have already told you, I don't know, but Pitt County was actually featured in a public management bulletin. Have you already told them this?
No.
Published by the UNC School of Government. And it's a bulletin about human trafficking. It's called Human Trafficking in North Carolina: Strategies for Local Government Officials. And Pitt County is in here, and we get kind of kudos. One of the things that you are recognized for is every January that you sign a proclamation and invite us to come in. You signed a proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness Month. You invite us to come in, and you present us with a beautiful copy of it that's framed. And we appreciate that, and it got recognized, that and other efforts, in this document, which I'm going to give you a copy of, and invite you to take a look through it, maybe learn a little bit more about human trafficking and the ways that local government officials like yourselves could get involved. Thank you for your engagement so far, and I look forward to working with you even more.
Thank you for coming. Next.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we have on the speakers. We did want to recognize the prior speaker, Talia Barlow. I believe she's a, yeah, she wants to come back up just for a minute. Her speech was for the North Carolina Youth Voice, which I understand is part of the, you'll be a delegate going to the NCAA C Conference coming up in Hickory this coming weekend?
Yes.
I wanted to recognize you and your leadership and part of the reason why you're here and why you presented.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next.
Not, excuse me, I'm sorry. If it's not any trouble, I would like a picture with all of you after the meeting is adjourned. Is that okay?
Maybe late.
Maybe late, but yeah.
It'll be fine.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next, you have items to report. Your first report is concerning the Southwest Bypass Court of Land Use Plan. You've heard on this project in the past, but Eric Gooby is here to provide a update as to the efforts on this study.
Thank you. Glad to be here tonight to provide you our latest update on our Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan. We've been making a lot of progress since the last time I've reported to you back in June. First of all, we did complete a second community meeting and open house at Pitt Community College on June 25th. We had probably about 50 to 60 people that attended the meeting. They were given two formal presentations. They had one at 4:00 and then one at 7:00, so that if people were there early, they could hear it early, didn't have to stay through the whole session, but if they came late, then they had a different, or had another session or another presentation they could hear on the plan. So these are just some pictures you see. These are the folks and the information we presented. You see, this is one of our consultants, Jake Petrowski, who's the project manager for our consultant Stuart. He provided all the information to the public. So we felt like we had a really good turnout and got a lot of really good input from the folks that attended the meeting. Some of the other things that we've completed, we've conducted a transportation analysis on the roadways surrounding the bypass to determine what kind of improvements may be needed in the future due to the growth and development around that area. Then we also had our final steering committee meeting last Thursday on the 16th, and the steering committee did vote to provide a unanimous endorsement of the plan. So one of the things I want to just take a few minutes is to go through just some of the policy recommendations we have in the plan. As I mentioned, this is a, it is a collaborative effort. It's with Pitt County, Town of Aiden, Town of Winterville, NCDOT, and the city of Greenville. This will be the cover of the land use plan when it's presented in its final document. And you see, this is our steering committee, as well as our technical teams, made up of a number of folks, particularly from the county, the city, and both towns of Aiden and Winterville, as well as folks from the Greenville Urban Area, MPO, NCDOT, and GUC. The plan, we do have a vision statement for the plan. The plan is to provide a framework for a coordinated approach to land use, road infrastructure, schools, and utilities, as well as to create a well-designed cohesive development that strengthens the existing communities, balances new employment, commercial and residential areas with agricultural and open space preservation. And that last bit in particular was something we heard about a lot at our community meetings, was that they really wanted to preserve the agricultural and rural feel of this area. So we've got some things I'm going to discuss with you here in just a second to emphasize that. So this is the future land use map. You're familiar with our rezonings. We always have our recommendations based off the future land use plan and the map. This particular area will have its own map. As you see, of note in particular is on the western side of the bypass, which you see is the red dash that sort of runs down the middle of that study area. On the western side of that roadway is going to be primarily agricultural and suburban residential. That was a key emphasis, was to really keep that western side of the study area agricultural and rural and to maintain that feeling through that area. You also see there's a lot of concentration of different types of uses, mainly commercial and some mixed-use areas around the interchanges. And then also, you see in the purple areas, there are the industrial areas, and those would be located the north up near the existing rail line and also where the landfill is, and then down to the south in Aiden and their jurisdiction where there's already some existing industrial development down there. So there are 13-character areas that are designated in the plan. I won't go through all these, but just to give you an idea, this is what will classify what those areas are on that map. And so as things are, as requests come in, if things are designated as agricultural, this will determine what type of development should occur in those agricultural areas, also the neighborhood commercial and the mixed-use and the regular commercial districts. There are four policy recommendation areas in the plan. The first is under land use and economic development, and this is to encourage land use patterns that capitalize on opportunities for both commercial and industrial development, as well as to limit strip development. And that non-residential-type development should also be context-sensitive. So if it's in an area that is designated as a neighborhood commercial, it should be a type of commercial that fits in that area, not necessarily a big box. that fits in that area, not necessarily a big-box commercial. Again, also to protect agriculture, to encourage very low-density development west of the bypass, to preserve historic properties in the Rinston Historic District, that's a very centrally-located area in this study area, and we want to make sure we're preserving that, particularly probably through, through some type of amendment to our zoning ordinance to add some additional protections on top of that area. Also want to improve the quality of residential development and allow some type of conservation design, particularly in areas that are environmentally sensitive, so that you can achieve a better, a more dense type of development, but still have that open space reservation around it. Second area of recommendations falls under aesthetics and user experiences, this is how we want people to, to perceive the bypass as they're driving down the road. I want to improve billboard regulations, and particularly to encourage consistency between jurisdictions. One of the things that we're somewhat proud of with the counties, our signed regulations will not, will not allow billboards along freeways. So that, that portion of the highway that runs through the county will not have any billboards on it. And we'd like to encourage the jurisdictions, particularly Winterville and Aiden and Greenville, to, to work on their jurisdictions, work on their regulations to ensure it's consistent with ours, to, to maintain that, that feel through the bypass. I want to work on encouraging preservation of tree buffers along the bypass, then encourage design regulations for these areas that we consider to be gateways, particularly at the interchanges that lead into the municipalities. That would include design regulations for, for any kind of commercial uses that go in there, make sure that they are, that it's a pleasant experience when they, when they first start entering those areas. And then also to coordinate with NC DOT on interchange beautification, some type of plantings or something to, to beautify those, those on-ramps. The third area is under recreation and open space. Boards where we have joint use agreements with Pitt County Schools to utilize recreational facilities for the public, we want to continue to use those, but also, there is a distinct lack of recreational opportunities in this particular area of the county. So one of the things that was, was brought up at the community, community meetings, also as part of our steering committee, was to develop a park site west of Winterville. I want to review our open space standards for residential zoning districts, and again, to incentivize that when they develop residential, that they're providing open space. Then conduct planning and feasibility studies for new greenways, and also the last one would be to discourage light pollution. People don't think about light pollution too much in terms of, of a land use plan, but this is a, this is an area that, again, to maintain that agricultural and rural feel, having a dark sky is important for that. And particularly, we have some, some resources in the southern part of the county with the time for science, a lot of their activities depend on a dark sky. They have astronomy programs, and they don't want a lot of light pollution interfering with those activities. And the fourth area is infrastructure and transportation. So we want to update our interlocal agreements, the factory and economic development potential at interchange areas, and determine who's, who's going to serve those areas. Also explore an urban service area designations for the municipalities, so that we can focus growth and development in those areas that can be served by utilities such as water and sewer. I want to work with Pitt County Schools on school capacity designs and needs, so that we know that as schools are developed or built, that they bring development with them. So we want to make sure that, we're trying to keep the school sites to the east of the bypass. If they go to the west, though, that we have some, some measure of control over the development around that. And then also to improve our stormwater controls for new development. For the transportation side, we want to make sure that we're improving our connectivity, enhancing capacity of our existing roadway, so that as development occurs, there's a lot of large lots, particularly on the western side of Winterville, that are ripe for commercial-type development, that they are developing a road network that's not going to just dump all their traffic onto existing roads, it's going to spread it out a little bit better. On new roads, we'll make sure we're including bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And then we want to support roadway improvements that are currently under consideration by NC DOT, and if you look at the map on the right-hand side, that'll sort of show you, those areas in green, particularly along US 13, Frog Level Road, and Four Lines, those are already under consideration for improvements and widening, so we want to make sure we're continuing to support those. And then also conducting future study and pursuing improvements for areas of future growth and development. So some of these new interchanges, particularly 102, the Davenport Road, Davenport Farm Road intersection, and then the Fire Tower Road extension, as well as some improvements along NC 11. So with the plan, we've got to make sure that it's, it's something that we can implement. So the plan's also going to have about a dozen implementation strategies. These, these are sorted from short-term strategies to long-term. First would be, of course, to adopt the land use plan and consider it when we're having rezonings, then also updating our land use regulations to be consistent with the plan. So those will, those are things that you'll probably be seeing fairly soon after we adopt the plan, so that we can make sure that this plan isn't just going to sit on a shelf somewhere, that we're implementing it and it's going to be workable. And then also, part of that is also with rezoning requests that occur in the area, we have certain districts, we, the, the plan will have what we call a crosswalk table, and this will give us some guidance in terms of if they're requesting a certain type of rezoning, particularly in an agricultural area or a suburban residential, whether that zoning district is compatible with that land use designation. So some of our next steps, on September 19th, our planning board will be holding a public hearing, at which time they'll be, will be looking for a recommendation for the plan. And then October 15th, we'll recommend a public hearing from this board for final consideration of the plan. With that, I don't have any further information, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to answer any questions of anybody.
Good presentation, this is for information, as we know. Is there any questions? If not, we appreciate you and continue to keep us informed.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. All right, ma'am.
Next, we have a monthly financial report from Brian Barnett, our finance director, CFO.
Good afternoon, you guys have with you our first month of this fiscal year. Being that it is the first month, we do want to keep our expenditures underneath the 8.33%, which we are at currently, 7%. With that, if you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Mr. Chairman, a favor. Second. Made in second, let's vote. Thank you, Brian. Next one.
Next, the July 2018 tax collection report by Raymond Revilla.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners.
Good day.
Pitt County combined collection rate for real and personal property taxes for fiscal year 2018-2019 is 8.11%. Combined collection rate one year ago on real and personal property was 8.03%. Tax administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary enforcement remedies that are available through the North Carolina General Statutes. These include bank attachments, discheated funds, interim foreclosures, the North Carolina Debt Setoff Program, rent levies, sheriff levies, and wage garnishments.
Do I have motion to approve this?
May I?
All right, thank you, sir, let's vote. Appreciate you. All right, next.
Next, there's a report concerning a Golden Leaf funding opportunity for what has been called the Community-Based Grants Making Initiative, and this is targeted to what is being called the Northeast Regional Prosperity Zone. Brian Barnett, Barnett and myself have been attending meetings on this, going back to the first of the year, and it's targeted, the counties in the northeast part of the state. I believe there's a, an $11 million pot of money being set aside. It was initially an initiative of Golden Leaf, the Rural Center, and what was the third Friday Center, maybe? The Friday Center, those three institutions with the Golden Leaf taking the lead on it. And it initially came out as a, an initiative to encourage counties to work collaboratively across county lines, having multiple counties work on projects together that would have systemic change towards job creation and, and such goals that the Golden Leaf has. Brian's going to make a presentation, he's kind of taken the lead on this in the last couple of months, and I'll kind of interject as, as needed as we go along.
Sure. Right now, we have four projects that we're looking at. As the manager alluded to, the projects are looking for a regional collaborator, collaborative effort. The first project is, you do have listed in, in your abstract, is a regional manufacturing workforce initiative between Pitt County, Beaufort County, and Martin County. This particular project is looking to introduce students in middle school to the manufacturing opportunities that we have in the three counties. The second project that we are looking at involves Pitt County, Martin County, Hight County, Beaufort County, and East, East Carolina University. On this project, we are looking to involve the students at ECU to go out into four counties to help spark micro businesses. We are looking to enhance the current small businesses within these counties, and we're also looking to see what opportunities are available that are currently not being served within those counties, especially out in the more rural portions of the four counties. The third project that we're looking at is Pitt Community College as part of their Visions Program. This is a program that is looking to take at-risk students, dropout students, and introduce them to the opportunities in the manufacturing world here in Pitt County as well. They're currently doing, it's part of a larger project with Pitt Community College, but this would help to, to expand upon their existing student body from roughly 125 to close to 300 students. And the fourth project that we're looking at is a partnership with the Town of Farmville. They are going to be building a new library in the spring, and they're looking at a project that will open up opportunities in STEM and, and, and manufacturing as well to the community in that particular part of the county. So right now, all four projects are being considered. The manager will have to sign off on which projects we want to submit for Golden Leaf. We have a $2 million limit for our projects, and our timetable is to submit a letter of inquiry to Golden Leaf by September the 7th.
So once we submit a letter, then the entities would be then invited to submit a letter of?
So the process is going to work, after the 7th, the Golden Leaf and their staff will review the projects to actually provide us feedback on opportunities to make them even stronger. That goes back into October for a full application, and from October to, I believe, early part of next year, Golden Leaf will review all the projects to let us know in February who will actually receive the funding.
So we, I guess I'd like to kind of characterize this, this whole initiative as progressive, I can see this headline now, or this quote in the paper, but progressive, convoluted, and frustrating. Because when we started out, it was strictly going to be cross-county lines, counties joining up to, to have the projects that were, again, collaborative in nature, and then at, kind of toward the end of the process, they then invited via invitations all different other kinds of groups, everything from the ECU Dental School to, and there was a number of groups that were not necessarily multi-county, even though I guess their initiative could have been, but they were invited late to the game, to the process. So at this point in time, what we're recommending, based upon the information we have and based upon the timeframe we're working with, is that you pursue the first one, the Regional Manufacturing Workforce Initiative, again, involving Pitt, Beaufort, and Martin Counties, and then, that's 1.5 of a $2 million allocation. We're recommending the last one, number four, the Farmville Public Library, as I guess that would be a non-multi-county project that it is STEM-related, as they're going to use this half a million dollars as they are constructing a new library to put computers and STEM-related educational resources in that facility. So if the board is in agreement with that, we, we have not gone through a formal vetting process of, of us actually bringing each of the, the four entities in, but we have been at the table with them as they have formally presented to the other counties in the region at the meetings that Golden Leaf has conducted, either Brian's been there, or I've been there earlier on in the process. So I think we, we have heard their pitch for their, their proposals and their projects. Again, we're under a deadline now that's self-imposed by, by Golden Leaf, but again, our staff recommendation would be number one at 1.5 million, number four at half a million dollars. There's no county match required on this, even though they, Golden Leaf would encourage it if, if the county wanted to step up and put match, but we're not recommending match, we're just saying that if, to, to get Pitt County's projects into the process, those would be the two that we would recommend at this point in time.
How'd you arrive at these figures?
You mean number two and number four?
Sir?
Number two or number one? The?
Both.
One with ECU of Carolina?
Is that what we discussed, number two? Okay, the entrepreneurial ship?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, the number two, the regional micro business ecosystems?
No, that's not, you're not answering my question.
How do we derive it, the numbers?
It is too vocal.
The, the numbers were submitted by the different groups that worked on their projects?
That petition are requested.
Correct.
And you're just supplementing that, these, these people have already made their request to Golden Leaf.
Well, they're?
And you'll be supported from the county, is that correct?
They vetted through the county manager via, and to me, the Board of Commissioners at the same time, and then we then make a recommendation to them who should be submitted on. Number two, Brian, how much was their request in dollars?
So that's the one, that is the 1.5 million dollar, and the Farmville is half a million.
All right. And number one was how much money?
445,000.
Okay, so number one is 445,000, number two is 1.5 million, number three is 383,000, and number four is 500,000. We are recommending number two, the regional micro business ecosystems, and number four, the Farmville Public Library, half a million.
Do you need a motion from this?
We'd prefer, yes, sir.
Beth?
Mr. Chairman, I have looked at these, and I sort of know a little bit about how the Golden Leaf works, so the sooner we get our recommendation in to them, then they still have to go through and vet it and make a decision. I move that we support the recommendation of our manager and our finance person, and recommend that they support number two, the regional micro business ecosystem, which will help lots of counties, and the Farmville Public Library, which has started to play a very important part in the PCC local entity there in Farmville, and they are using the local library in many ways, and as you said, the addition of the computers and the, some of the STEM programs, they are working hard on becoming a center. If you'll remember a report we had a while back about our libraries, and how many people were coming from out of county, as well as out of town and different parts of the county to our different libraries. Farmville had the highest number of group people coming in from just outside of the town, so I make a motion that we accept your recommendation.
Second. All right, in a discussion. But my way of information to follow up on what Scott said, two or three of these are multi-counties, but Beth alluded to it, but didn't say specifically, but in, on this library in Farmville, you've got Green County, Pitt County, Wilson, so there is a multi-county area affected, Scott. All right, ready to vote? Thank you. Next.
Next, we have a, I guess what I call a good news report concerning the Animal Shelter Renovation Report and Update, and Michelle Whaley and Tim Cooley are going to present that.
Good evening, I'm delighted to come tonight to give you a short update on the Animal Shelter Expansion Renovation Construction Project. As you are aware, we had our groundbreaking on August 4th, 2018. Since then, we are starting our four-phase project. We have had monthly meetings with the contractor, the architect, the engineers, and Pitt County staff. We did request a meeting about a month ago to discuss communication, and since things, we feel like they've gone much smoother and communication has been improved. Despite the rain, we are several weeks ahead of schedule, and our project costs are within budget, which is awesome. Phase one, which we're in now, is the new construction, it is scheduled to be completed by the end of October. This will house our dog adoption area, our puppy adoption area, two additional restrooms, and two inside get acquainted areas. We'll then move to phase two, which is renovation of what we refer to as our old section. It currently houses dogs and friendly cats. This is scheduled to begin in November and continue through January of 2019. When completed, it will be a new cat adoption area, a new cat holding area, an intake area, an office for our shelter attendants to have a space to work out of, and our animal control officers to have a space to work out of. Right now, the officers have to work out of their trucks. Then we'll enter phase three, dog adoption and feral cat area. Currently, it's renovated to bring the areas in compliance with the North Carolina State Codes, which we struggle with right now. It is scheduled to begin in November and continue through January of 2019, and I have that totally wrong on the slide, but anyways, it's estimated to begin February of 2019. Sorry, I didn't catch that error. And then phase four, renovating the lobby, and we hope all of it will be done by April, May of next year. This will create a conference room for us, have a reception area, have an office for the director and assistant manager, and a break room that the employees and volunteers can utilize. So we are moving right along, it's exciting. If you haven't been by there, please come by and visit, I'll be glad to walk out there with you. And then our public information office has put together a short little video to kind of show you the progress, and I believe they're going to play it.
Thank you, ma'am, good work. Any questions? Good work. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it, love.
Come see us.
Next?
Next is my reporter's manager. Wanted to give you an update, I guess, concerning, in the last meeting on August 6th, some of the comments regarding the consolidation discussion that started back when, back in last August, when the Board of Commissioners and the Greenville City Council held a joint meeting at the Shepherd Memorial Library. Both the city and the county was asked to kind of renew and revisit the concept of consolidating animal control services between both organizations. And I guess to kind of fast forward to the present, did receive some communication from the city manager that she sent to the council regarding all the efforts that they have taken to date to improve their services within the corporate limits of the city of Greenville, and they did an inventory of services of what they provide, what we provide, obviously two different levels of service, not that one is wrong or right, but just two different levels of service. And based upon, I guess, their, what we do individually, each do, the city manager at this point right now is recommending to council not to consolidate based upon those reasons, and at the same time, I've concurred with that, that with no consensus as to changing those service levels, that you could not consolidate the two operations unless we were told the service levels will be X, and the two entities agree upon it. But in this case, they feel like they are being effective in their service delivery. I'd be happy to share with the board the communications she had, the city council's public document, if you'd like to see it.
Any other information on this? Any questions by the members of the board? I think we've hit this several times.
Are we going to be giving copies of all that information?
I'd be happy to share.
I've heard about all these additional services that the city's supposed to be providing, and yet I have yet to see it enumerated.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share that.
We've asked, we have asked and asked, and asked, so now we find out.
Be sure to get that, Scott. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, next you have on the list of items, the next meeting dates will be September 10th at 9:00 a.m. and October 1st at 9:00 a.m. Regarding future meeting dates, I didn't know if I Chairman Webb wanted to maybe allude to the December meeting schedule we discussed, so we can maybe start planning ahead if you'd like to entertain that discussion or...
I won't be here for that day. I'm being sent to some training, and that's usually the day that we're sworn in. Usually, our second meeting has almost no business on it, so I was wondering if we could combine both meetings into one, the following week?
To the second meeting, Glenn. Do we have a motion for that?
Or actually, in between, it would be...
So, yeah, you take your December 3rd and December 17th meeting and change, and combine the two of those to December, Monday, December 10th. I'd still like to do a 6:00 p.m. meeting if we could on the 10th.
All right. You gonna make a motion?
Yes, sir, make a motion.
It's our second.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Thank you.
Okay. Item C on the list of items, the, as the board is probably aware, we've reached out to you, but just for the general public's information, we've got the North Carolina Supreme Court, who will be holding session in the Pitt County Courthouse on October 2nd. This will be at 9:30 and 11 o'clock. This is a, what I would call a ticketed event, in which you have to have a ticket in order to be able to watch the proceedings of the Supreme Court happen, and there's a number of events going on the day before, as well as the day of, and this is really a historic occasion for Pitt County. The North Carolina Supreme Court is, to my knowledge, has never held session in Pitt County before, and we're making all kinds of considerations, accommodations, bracing the courthouse up, which is actually a good exercise for us, since it's been about 20 years since we added on to it, just making sure it shines and sparkles as needed for this event. There is an opportunity for a group picture with the Board of Commissioners and the seven members of the North Carolina Supreme Court. I think the clerk has reached out to the board regarding that, and again, if you're interested in attending a session, the 9:30 or 11 o'clock, if you'll let us know, we'll be, make arrangements to get you those tickets for those two, or one of those two times.
Can we, Kimberly, I was wondering, could we get all the other stuff they asked for from us?
I actually need it by tonight.
Okay. What is it?
Just your driver's license number is all I need from each person that plans to go.
Okay. That, thank you.
Okay, anything else on that?
No, sir, that's it.
Motion for the consent agenda?
I move. Second.
Second. All right, let's vote. Back to you again, Mr. Delly.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, board members, tonight, the board is going to consider the appointment of the Tax Administrator for the Pitt County Tax Department. If we can have Mr. Sam Kroom come to the podium. As the board is aware and for the public's information, we've been vetting a recruitment process on this probably for a good period of time, the last six months plus, and are pleased to announce that the Board of Commissioners has selected Mr. Kroom to become the next Tax Administrator for the department. This is an appointed position that the Board of County Commissioners appoints, and the discussions have been with the board that this would be a, at a grade 82, increment five salary level, and he is asking for consideration of his years of service in the system in terms of his personal leave. It'd be 12 years credit as part of this appointment, and you'd be approving a two-year initial appointment, as we've done in the past, after the two-year period, then we'd move to the four-year periods, but initially, we normally would do two unless he would like to ask for something different, and the board wanted to grant that. Also, you'd be approving his bond as the Tax Administrator as part of this overall motion and package. I didn't know, Mr. Kroom, did you want to say anything?
Just an honor and a privilege that y'all are going to appoint me for this. I do take it as an honor. I've told you before that I have a passion for public service, and this is how I get to choose. I mean, this is how I get to serve the public, so I am very appreciative of y'all appointing me. Thank you very much.
I got one question. Is it normal to have a two-day personal leave out of each month for every employee in the county? Am I misreading that?
Well, based upon the number of years...
I know his years, but I mean just to my question, he's got 13 hours per month of personal leave.
Right. All county employees that have between 10 and 15 years of service per year personal leave ordinance is allowed that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, what's next?
Do we have to make a motion?
It did not stay, it did not stay here, but at the last meeting, one of the contingencies was that in a certain period, he would actually become a Pitt County resident. Is that...
Thank you, 24 months.
That was it.
Correct, thank you.
Okay.
You making a motion for it all the time?
Second.
Yes.
All right, and as our second to Mr. Colson's motion?
Yes, and me.
Yep, so done.
Any questions or discussion? If not, let's vote. Thank you, Mr. Kroom. Anything else on that?
No, sir, that's, that does that? Congratulations.
I need to take my oath.
Does he have it? Is that his family sitting out there?
Is this your family? You want to bring him up and introduce?
Stand up or something?
Sure.
Yes.
Kimberly going to give him his oath, is that what it is?
They can join you if you like.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Right here in front, it's fine.
Get in the front here so the cameras will get you, see. Turn around, face Camera, that's right.
Introduce them to us, if you will, maybe, before you take those. Introduce your family.
This is my wife, Janice. This is my daughter Samantha. My son, Matthew. He and his girlfriend, Scarlett.
Hey, Scarlett. Put your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I, Samuel Kroom, will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, noninconsistent therewith, that I will not allow my actions as the tax administrator to be influenced by personal or potential friendships or obligations, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as the Pitt County Tax Administrator. So, help me God.
If you want to make a speech, get back up there.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome.
Please listen.
Welcome. Welcome aboard.
Like I said, it is a great honor to be here in Pitt County. I graduated from East Carolina University in 1994. I worked here nine years, and this is a homecoming for me, so I'm excited to get started. September 4th will not get here soon enough for me. So, thank you for appointing me, and I will make you the promise I will work hard for Pitt County and its citizens, and the citizens every day. Thank you very much.
Good to have you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, next we have John Demmer. He's going to present a ward of contract repairs to the transfer station at the solid waste recycling facility, or the transfer station, actually.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Transfer station floor at Solid Waste Recycling is in need of repair. Last time it was done was back in 2008. Pitt County Solid Waste Recycling hired Smith and Garner to evaluate and develop specifications to repair the existing transfer station floor. Smith and Garner has been working with North Carolina State University to develop a concrete mix that will withstand the daily operations of the transfer station and hopefully perform for a long period of time. The bid documents were let out for bid, and the bid opening was held June 21st of this year. The county only received two bids and did not open the bids per legal requirements. The project was re-advertised and bids were received on July 19th. One bid was received from Ferrier and Sons of Farmville. The project was bid in three different phases. Phase one was an optional test pad to ensure the county would be satisfied with the concrete. After staff met with the contractor, the county is comfortable eliminating phase one. The transfer station operations, as you know, can't be completely shut down, so we bid the project in two separate phases. The county requests, requested separate bids to allow the work to be done in two different fiscal years or in one year. Staff is recommending that phase two be completed in this fiscal year and phase three next fiscal year. Based upon their smitten and response of the fact that Ferrier and Sons built the transfer station and the positive experience working with the county, it is recommended by both Smith and Garner and Pitt County to award the contract to Ferrier and Sons for phase two of the project at a cost of $155,600 with a 5% contingency of $7,780, for a total of $163,380. The project was placed in this year's fiscal 2018-19 budget. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have a motion for that contract?
Second.
Second. In discussion.
When will it be completed?
We're anticipating about 30 days.
Okay, good.
All right, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do have two observations.
Yes, sir, Mr. Delly.
Number one, I'm amazed that the current floor didn't last any more than 10 years. That seems to me to be a very short period of time. Now, I know there's heavy equipment running over that concrete, but I'm still amazed that it only lasted 10 years.
Well, I think more of it is the leachate that goes across it worse than the heavy equipment.
The what that goes across?
Leachate, and that's the water that mixes with the...
Oh, okay, 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 okay. And then the other thing, what is the dimensions of this? What's the dimensions of the floor we're replacing?
Of this section or phase one? The floor is 100 by 100, the total floor, so it's 50 by 50.
Okay, so, to me...
Or 100 by 50, excuse me.
Okay, and I know, I'm going to vote for this, but that is, to me, extremely expensive for a slab of concrete, no bigger than that.
Well, we're pulling out the concrete. We're also putting in drainage. We're, and the concrete is going to be about eight inches thick.
Okay.
And we are doing some work to the transfer station itself. Some beams are being repaired as well.
Okay, good. And what is the anticipated life of this slab?
I hope over 10 years.
I hope over 10 years, too.
With, working with NC State, they are looking at transfer stations all over the place, so we've been, they have come down, they're going to be involved, and that's the reason we looked at phase one, because the concrete mix is going to be a little different. And the concrete mix is recommended by NC State and their, their staff.
But do they, do they put a time limit on the life of it? Not yet?
Not yet, no, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, let's finish our vote. All right. Do we have a motion for the Greenville Board of Adjustment?
So, move. I'm going to have one applicant, Stephen Atkinson, and I'll make a motion, whip on him.
All right. Ready to vote? Do we have a motion for the ABC Board, Anne?
I make a motion that we accept it, Chair.
All right, ready to vote? All right, Madam Attorney, on our closed session, please.
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a3, attorney-client privilege to consult with your attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve that attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, and also under 143-318.11a1, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information. With that, if you will move.
For closed session, do we have to have that?
Where's the young lady? Come up, young lady.
I tell it away. Do we have to vote on what you just said?
Yes.
All in favor of the closed session remarks? Let's vote.
Take a picture. Are you leaving? Yeah. She's coming back and get her to sit up there and we'll stick her.